All right, I'd like to call this August 21st, 2014 Cookville City Council Meeting to Order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epp.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
All present.
All right, would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Guys aren't gonna believe this, but it's normally this crowded in here. All right, item one, Consider Approval of Agenda as Presented.
We have no changes.
No changes, do we have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Saica.
I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item two, Receive Presentation of Awards to the Water Quality Control Department. We have an award presentation by Mike Bernard, Division Vice President with Smith-Sackman-Reed Engineering Firm, here tonight representing the Kentucky-Tennessee section of the American Waterworks Association and the Kentucky-Tennessee section of the Water Environment Association.
Thank you very much, Mayor Swallows and members of the council. My day job is a consulting engineer, as you mentioned, with Smith-Sackman-Reed, but one of the more fun aspects of my job is I get to serve on the Honors and Awards Committee for the American Waterworks Association. Once a year, we hold a conference jointly between us and Kentucky, and as part of that conference, the Honors and Awards Committee will present awards to those systems that have gone above and beyond the call of duty with respect to water quality, innovation, operations, and really it is an excellence in operations award that I come to present tonight. And so I'd like to call forward the members that are going to accept this award. The American Waterworks Association is the largest organization of its type in North America that is focused on delivering safe drinking water to the members of the United States, and we're broken into forty-two local sections. The local section that you guys are a member of is the Kentucky-Tennessee section. So this award is for distribution system operations excellence, and we give three of these awards, awards out per year. The large system award win this year was for Murfreesboro. You guys are the medium system awards classification, and their small award system was the Tellico area special systems. So three awards, that's out of six-hundred-and-ninety approximately water systems in the state of Tennessee. This is quite an accomplishment for these guys, and really what stood out to us when we came, we do onsite interviews of people who are nominated for this, and when we did the onsite award back in, I believe it was March or April, for your system, what really stood out to us was the professionalism of the staff. They took to heart the attributes of effective utility management in trying to set benchmarks in comparing themselves to not only their peers, but also to themselves, and making sure their water quality was of the absolute highest order using the technology that they had at their disposal to monitor and track those things. And absolutely, their professionalism is what stood out to us. So it is my pleasure and my honor to present this award to the Water Quality Control Department. Thanks, congratulations.
Thank you.
I am not technically on the Honors and Awards Committee for the Water Environment Association, however, I did get permission from the chairman of their committee to go ahead and present this award, since I was going to be up here, to the wastewater treatment plant staff as well, if they could join me up front also. The WEA organization does their awards a little bit differently. The award is based primarily upon compliance with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit that is in place, and it's very impressive to me that your organization has been able to get this award six of the last seven years. That is a noteworthy achievement and one that is not repeated very often across the state of Tennessee. I toured the facility myself, and these guys are doing a fantastic job with what they do. And so it is my pleasure, on behalf of the Kentucky-Tennessee Water Environment Association, to present this operational excellence award also to the wastewater treatment plant staff. I did want to say one other difference between the AWWA and the WEA. The AWWA does not allow ORDs to come back year after year after year, back-to-back, so you probably won't see them even back here next year for that, but it is no reflection whatsoever upon the professionalism of your staff, and congratulations again.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard.
Thank you.
All right, on to old business, consider approval of minutes of the council meeting held on August 7th, 2014. Motion for approval.
Sound moved.
Saica.
I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item four, Consider on Second and Final Reading, ordinance 140612, rezoning 1100 South Willow Avenue from LM Light Manufacturing to CG General Commercial, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the location of the property is on the screen, and as you stated, this is second and final reading. The purpose of this rezoning is to allow for the commercial development of this property. The planning commission and planning department have both recommended in favor. We've had no calls or comments since first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Saica.
Questions, comments?
As far as we know, there's not gonna be a target.
That was gonna be my question, James, I tell you what, I've had a million people at... Because that's right, that's right there on the road.
We'll have something there, probably won't be a target.
I can't get, no one will tell, they won't tell us.
We could've started a good rumor that the next council would have to deal with.
Thank you.
Anything else? I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. All right, on new business. Item five, Consider Awarding Bid for Vehicle Servicing, sponsors Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, we recently opened bids for a one-year vehicle servicing, which is standard oil changes for city vehicles. Low bidder was Clean Care Auto Care Mobile One Lube Express, which is, I believe, on Interstate Drive. They were low bidder on all categories of conventional oil, as well as the synthetic oil changes, but I would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Do we have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Saica.
Questions, comments?
Ms. Kathy did a great job of presenting this in your stead. Actually, she did a really good job, she may want to just kinda watch out a little bit.
I'll be happy to let her take it anytime she wants.
All right, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Item six, Consider Approval to Purchase Two Hundred Sanitation Carts and Fifty-Six Replacement Lids from a sole-source provider, sponsors Public Works, Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we received price for the sanitation carts and lids that we use. String Fellow was the dealer in our area for the carts we use, so this is a sole-source provider. I recommend you approve of the price they did for a total of fourteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do we have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Saica.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Brown, how often do you have to replace the lids? Or is that a huge problem? I look at that with fifty-six replacement lids, when I consider how many...
This is the first time we bought lids, they've got a lifetime warranty, so normally they get replaced by the company. So we've been doing this about ten years, and this is the first lids we've actually purchased. Not very many.
All right, anything else? I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item seven. Consider Authorizing City Manager to Execute an Engineering Contract for Design Services on the Proposed Bennett Road, North Project, sponsors Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, I'm here tonight seeking authorization for the city manager to enter into a contract with Clinton Engineering Services. That's gonna be to design the Bennett Road, in the Bennett Road extension from the new fifth interchange over to Highway 70. We're looking to install a twelve-inch water line and get that put in that project. This engineering services will do the water line design, work with the railroad on the bore, we'll have the bore under railroad, and all the side roads, and we wanted to, we thought it was in our best interest to go ahead and put that in that project and have that done, and not come back later and tear a lot of things up. So we would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do we have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Saica.
Questions, comments? Do you know? I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Item eight, Consider Authorizing City Manager to Enter Into an Engineering Contract for Utility Relocation Relative to the New Fifth Interchange Project, sponsors Mr. Tony Peak.
Mayor and council, this engineering contract is relative to the fifth interchange, as you mentioned. We've negotiated with Gary McGowan, with Staking Services Company, to show the state our relocations, removals, and betterment at that project. The map there that you can see, I'm not sure you can tell a lot about it, but the red is the lines that we will remove relative to the intersection. The blue is some relocated and betterment. And again, the engineer is Staking Services Company. The cost, we think, is gonna be around fifty-one thousand, one oh eight. We think we'll get an estimated TDOT reimbursement of that fifty-one thousand of forty thousand, eight hundred dollars. And of course, this allows CED to get all of our stuff in the state's contract and be performed by the state contractor. And that's a Chapter eighty-six certification for the city manager to sign the documents relative to sending in our plans and the reimbursement and those kind of things. I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Do we have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Saica.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll vote.
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item nine. Receive and Consider Certified Election Returns from the City Council Election Held on August 7th, 2014, sponsors Ms. Kathy McLean.
You have received a copy in your packets, the certified election returns, and I recommend approving them.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy. Do we have motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Saica.
Is anybody really gonna vote against this?
This was my chance.
Yeah, this your chance, Alma.
This was my chance, I blew it, I blew it.
You still vote against it.
All right, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, this is the portion of the meeting where we hear from the officers, council members, council members and city manager. Would anyone want to start? If you want to, sure.
It's been a privilege to serve on the city council for the past four years. I want to thank the directors, the staff, and the city manager for your leadership, your professionalism, and your excellent quality of work that each of you have given to this city. All of you have made our jobs easier, I know we said that more than once, but you have, it's the truth. We, as a council, have dealt with many projects, all sizes, from the new Public Works location, the Highlands Business Park, the Cookville Unplugged project, the package stores, Dogwood Park, and many more. And in the grand scheme of things, it's not about me, it's not about any of the people that sit up here, it's about the thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-plus people that reside in this city. They're the ones that we work for. And I want to thank all of the city of Cookville, all of you, for giving me the opportunity to work for you these past four years. Thank you.
Sitting on the Cookville City Council for the past eight years has been a privilege and an honor. When I was elected to my first term, I was humbled that the people of Cookville would trust me to represent them. Throughout my terms, I have tried to live up to that trust and to remember that initial feeling of being humbled. My desire to seek a public office came from a strong sense of duty that was instilled in me by my parents. My father joined the army towards the end of World War II, and then made the military his career. My mother was of Polish descent, and she met my father when he was serving his country in Germany. My mother became a naturalized U.S. citizen after she had her four children here in the United States. My little brother was eighteen months old when she became a citizen in nineteen fifty-nine. She took great pride in being an American. She would've loved to have seen me sit on this council, and I know she knew I was here. My father was able to come to both of my swearing ends, and he was very proud that I was giving back to my community. My parents laid a great foundation for me, and I am grateful for that. When I was elected, I was overwhelmed after our first training session. So many departments, so many people, and quite frankly, I knew nothing of sewers, roads, gas, electricity, and the thousand other things they were talking about that make this city great. However, I realized very quickly that people who were very interested in making Cookville a great place to live surrounded me. Jim Shipley, he shared his expertise and knowledge with me, short and to the point. All of the department heads answered my questions patiently and never laughed at my ignorance. I have tried, over the years, to come up with something to stump the department heads. I don't know enough about what they do in order to do it, so I just trusted them, and my trust was well-placed. Gail Fowler walked me through my first years. Tracy Johnson helped me wrap up these last years. The Raider men sat to my left, and together, we were able to stick to parliamentary procedure, meeting after meeting. I leave this office knowing that the city of Cookville is staffed with professionals who execute their jobs with great skill and devotion. Both of the councils I have worked with have shown dedication and devotion to the city of Cookville. It's been a pleasure to work with my fellow councilmen, and both councils have worked to continually maintain the great quality of life we have here in Cookville. I've gotta throw this in. As a U.S. history teacher who loves to teach constitutional history, it has been very exciting to me to be a part of a government entity. As I taught government to my students, I would stop and I would think, wow, I'm a part of this, I'm a part of what I'm teaching. As I leave this office, I want to acknowledge the great support my family gave to me. I thank the employees of the city of Cookville for the great job they do, and finally, thank you to the citizens of Cookville for allowing me to represent you for eight years. Thank you.
Jim, I'm trying to get Jim to say something over here, but he's...
He's gonna be back up here.
Well, I wanna say something, and I'll try to keep it short and sweet, which is impossible to do, but I have, I'm not gonna try to reiterate some of the things you guys already said, because I agree completely with what Connie and Alma have already said. I've been honored and blessed to be able to serve on public service for now seventeen years. I don't know how, and why people put their trust in me, but they do, and it is humbling, it is. As I said, it is very humbling to be put in that position. And I wanna thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to do this again, and I really hope I don't mess up. I really wanna do a good job. But in those seventeen years I've had the distinct honor to do this, I've served with lots of people, I have served with lots of people. And invariably, because of the jobs we do and the decisions we have to make, it brings tensions, it brings, sometimes, I'll just go ahead and say it, sometimes it brings egos, sometimes it brings territory. From day one, this council has been a blessing for me, because each and every person up here that I've had the opportunity to serve with has put ego aside, has put agenda aside, and have tried to do absolutely what is best for the city. You said it Connie first, and you said it second Alma, and it has been humbling for me to watch you guys work. It's been humbling for me to work with you guys. It has been an honor to serve with you. And I'm gonna miss you guys, I'm super excited about the new council that's coming on, and if I could say anything in a public forum before we serve, if we can work together, like we've worked together in this past council, great things can happen. That's one of the things I've learned, if you work together, great things can happen. And I look so forward to the next term, but I'm gonna really, I'm gonna really miss you guys. We've had some good times, we've had some rough times, we've had some good times. And I wanna thank you guys for serving with me, and God bless you guys, and happy trails.
Thank you.
Okay, Larry, I think I'll say that. You talked me into, I'll be, I'll even be briefer.
I was brief.
All right, for you, it was. Looking out in the crowd, I sense that you're Cookville proud too. You probably hear me say that a lot, this is a great place to live. We have a sense of place here. We've got a community that we need to sustain, that people wanna live, work, retire. We just have a great organization in the city, we've got great people here, people that come to Cookville. It's not our buildings, it's the people here that they admire and, you know, just wonder. It's a great place, I've been very humbled to serve, and thank you, the city of Cookville, for voting to let me serve four more years in the term. I know, being in government, that you've gotta be careful and consider it, because government is either working for you or doing something to you. So we need to be very careful and cautious in what we do. This council has been very good, and this next council, I assume, is gonna be the same, because we, what I hope for is that we have the knowledge to be aware of what we can do and the wisdom to know when we can do it. Thank you.
All right, normally up here, I'm kinda the jokester, so it's gonna be hard for me. You know, since the day I was sworn in, four years ago, I thought a lot about what I'd say when this day came. And there's so much to say, just like these guys said, but I'm not gonna keep you here all night. I'll honestly say that these past four years have easily been the most special years of my entire life. That's no exaggeration. Yeah, serving as mayor of this great city has been one of the biggest honors I've ever had. But something even bigger happened in the past four years. And it happened on December fifteenth, 2010, and June twenty-seventh, 2012. And that was the birth of our two children, Channing and Xavier. You're not gonna believe it, but I'm normally not emotional. The fact that I was able to serve as mayor of Cookville when they were born will always be one of my proudest accomplishments. At least you've done that as well, you served when your children were born. You served when your daughter was born, right? But the thing is, they're too young to really even know what that is, what's even going on right now. So if you guys will allow me, I want to read a little something I've written to them about these past four years and some life lessons with the hopes that one day they'll watch this recording and hopefully take some advice from this. Dear Channing and Xavier, I've had the privilege to serve as mayor of Cookville from 2010 to 2014, during the time you both were born. Channing, right now you're three and a half years old, and Xavier, you are two. So you guys are much too young to even know this or really even care. But I wanted to use this time to tell you why I did this and what I've learned from this experience, and hope you can learn from this as well. Your mother and I feel that it is extremely important to serve your community, and we had done that in several different capacities through the years, but felt like we wanted to be more involved in the direction of the city that we're gonna raise our family in. So we decided, and I ran for city council, I ended up being elected mayor, which was extremely humbling, extremely humbling. And along the way, I've learned a lot, some of it was just reinforced, but I've learned a lot. And here's some advice I want you guys to always know, and hopefully, you'll watch this one day, and it'll sink in. You are good enough. Most people are afraid to do things because they're afraid they're not good enough, afraid they'll fail. But you're good enough, learn that, and you won't be afraid of new things. You won't be afraid to fail, you won't need approval of others. Don't be afraid to make mistakes, those are some of the best teachers. Instead, learn to be okay with mistakes and learn to learn from them. Learn to shrug them off so they don't affect your profound confidence in who you are. There will never be a point in your life where it's the right time to do a great thing. If you're waiting for the perfect moment or a perfect timing, it's not gonna happen. If you're waiting for the perfect moment or a perfect timing, it's not going to happen. You have to create the perfect time and the perfect opportunity and the perfect situation. Never stop learning. If you just learn something a little each day, it will add up over time immensely. A lot of people become comfortable. They stop growing, they stop wanting, they become satisfied. When you have a goal that you're stretching for and reaching for that takes you out of your comfort zone, you'll find some talents and abilities that you have that you didn't know you had. Learn compassion. We start life with a very selfish outlook. We want what we want. But compassion is about realizing we are no more important than anyone else. And we aren't at the center of the universe, believe it or not. So when it annoys you, get outside of your little shell and try to see how their day is going. How can you help them be less angry, less in pain? Open your heart. Life is amazing if you don't shut it out. Other people are amazing. Open your heart, be willing to take the wounds that come with an open heart, and you will experience the best in life. And the last thing, we, Channing and Xavier, we're raising you in the Methodist Church. So the last little quote I'm going to say comes from John Wesley, who founded the Methodist Church. And it's, "Do all the good you can by all the means you can, in all the ways you can, in all the places you can, at all the times you can, to all the people you can, as long as ever you can." So, Channing, when you said, "Why do we always have babysitters?" These last several months. It's because your mother and I were serving and we're proudly serving and we'll continue to serve. And we hope that you guys do the same thing. You don't have to put your name on a ballot, but you need to serve your community. You need to give back more than you take. So remember these words and most of all, remember that mommy and daddy love you. And we've done every bit of this for you. Okay, now the serious stuff. I've traveled a lot in the last few months, six counties to be exact. Never left those six counties for a long time. Seen a lot of counties, a lot of cities. And I can say without a shadow of a doubt, and it's not close, folks, it's not close, this city is by far the most well-run city anywhere around here. Has nothing to do with the five of us, sorry guys. It has nothing to do with the five of us. It has everything to do with city manager, the department heads, the employees, the citizens. Because we all give back. There's some giving back again, right here about to serve again. That goes to show you how strong of a community we have. They want to come back and serve again. I can't tell you how excited I am for this city and this area. I mean, we are, we're about to explode and it's so exciting. It's so exciting to watch. So I ask everybody out there, be patient with the next council because they're probably going to have some growing pains because there's some things coming that we'll all have to deal with, but it's good things, just real good things. And I also ask you to have faith in them, get behind them. Let's help move this city forward. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make my last motion.
Please do.
I move that this council adjourns Senate.
Vote on it? Do we have to? All right, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
This is it?
Take your name and go sit down. I get it now. I get it now.
I think you have to go be sworn in.
Good job.
Get something else.
I guess we're ready to swear in then.
At this time, I will have the Honorable John Maddox, Circuit Judge of the 13th Judicial District, swearing in our newly-elected city council.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy. I'll ask everyone to be seated and I'll ask the new council members, if you would, to please stand right in front of the dice. I'm going to swear in in just a moment and this oath of office, I'm going to say, "I state your name." Please don't say "state your name." Please say your name. And then immediately after that, I'll give you your oath of office that you'll need to sign and that I will need to sign to make this official because the job's not done until the paperwork's completed. So if you would, raise your right hand and take this oath of office. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
And the Charter of the City of Cookeville.
Charter of the City of Cookeville.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties
I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of Councilman
Of the Office of Councilman.
To which I have been elected
To which I have been elected.
And which I am about to assume.
Which I am about to assume.
You may lower your hands and stand right there, if you would, and let me be the first to congratulate you. All right, let's get you councilmembers. Thank you.
Do you want to use this?
You want to use that?
They switched you like it's the last.
They switched me around.
Been a long time.
I've never sat in this seat before.
This time, I will call the roll. Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Walmsley.
Here.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Councilman Epps.
Here.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
All present.
Okay, now we're going to consider the approval of the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, go ahead and vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, now we will hold the election of the mayor and I'll entertain a nomination for mayor.
Mr. City Manager, I'd like to make a motion that Ricky Shelton serves as mayor of the city of Cookeville.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion to second. But everybody, ready to vote? Go ahead and vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, item number three, I'd like to ask that we have nominations for election of vice mayor. And I so move that Larry Epps be vice mayor during this term. All in favor, vote please.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
At this time, if we could, I'd like to ask everyone to stand and I've asked Pastor Bobby Davis of Life Church to come and bless our council and our next four years in our city, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Father, first of all, we thank you for the leadership that we've had the last four years. Lord, we thank you for them blessing us with their service and their time. Father, thank you for this great community that we all love and love to raise our kids in. So, Lord, I just pray over these next four years that Lord's supernatural wisdom will be given to this council. Lord, you said in your word that if we ask for wisdom, you would give to us. And you said you resist the crowd but give grace to the humble. So, Lord, we just humbly ask you for your wisdom and your grace to be upon this council and upon our city. And we just thank you for the favor you've placed upon our community. And we thank you for this, in Jesus' name. Amen.
May he say that, thank you. Item number four is the announcement of my mayor's appointment to the planning commission and that will be Tracy Cody. Thank you for being willing to serve on that. Okay. Item number five, consider appointment of council's representative to serve on the planning commission.
Mr. Mayor and council, I think Councilman Woodford has agreed to serve another four years on the planning commission.
And I would like to make a nomination that Jim Woodford serves the council's representative.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll get the vote.
Sure.
All in favor, vote please.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
You were pretty quick on that, Larry.
Thank you, Jim. You've done a great job. That is a lot of focus. It's one of those committees that just sits back on the sideline, you don't hear about a lot, but it's a hard-working committee and Jim has been a stalwart. He's been for me as far as information, what goes on that planning commission. So he's done a great job and I was proud to be able to make a motion that you served, Jim, and thank you for volunteering to do that.
Thank you.
One thing I'm going to say, we built this council's chambers, I guess, back in 2006 or '07, but we're going to have to increase the air conditioning in here because it's hot. Okay. Now we want to honor our outgoing mayor and council that just left us and we all heard great words from them and so appreciate their service and their heart and their willingness to serve as they all talked about. And, you know, they truly do love the city and we know that. Could so identify with Mayor Swallows as he was up here because I was feeling a lot of the same things when I left in 2010. So hopefully you'll be back again one day. So right now, I'd like to read, which is item six, Resolution R. 140819, commending Mayor Matt Swallows for serving of the city council. Whereas Matt Swallows faithfully served as mayor of the city of Cookeville from August 2010 to August 2014, and whereas Matt Swallows, a successful businessman, sports enthusiast, devoted husband, and proud father of two, has served tirelessly and unselfishly, giving his time for the betterment of this city by serving on many boards and commissions while watching his family tree grow and developing roots in Cookeville, Tennessee. And whereas one of the youngest mayors to serve in the history of the city, Mayor Swallows has led with enthusiasm, passion, caring, and a willingness to listen to the concerns of citizens. And whereas with a vision to achieve positive growth, Mr. Swallows has been engaged in supportive of economic development, seeing projects progress and come to fruition during his tenure as mayor. And whereas as an advocate for quality of life, Mr. Swallows holds a special appreciation for the first responders of the community, supporting their dedicated efforts to keep citizens safe and healthy, as well as showing a spirit of community by actively participating in community events. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Cookeville, Tennessee, that on behalf of the citizens and employees of the city, deepest appreciation is hereby extended to Matt Swallows for the tremendous contribution he has made toward the growth and improvements of the quality of life in the city of Cookeville, this day adopted August 21st, 2014. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item seven, we'll have, Councilman Woodford will honor Connie Albright.
Okay. Whereas Connie Albright faithfully served as a councilman for the city of Cookeville from August 2010 to August 2014, whereas Connie Albright, a retired businesswoman, devoted wife and mother, has diligently served with passion and loyalty for the citizens of Cookeville, graciously giving in her time as a representative of our fair city in many different capacities during her tenure as councilman. And whereas Mrs. Albright's devotion to the city has included her support and service to the public library, the growth of the historic downtown area, Dogwood Park, and her eager participation in Cookeville Unplugged program, while fostering public-private partnerships as well as providing energy, conservation, and savings for the city. Her love of this city has been evident by her caring, conscientious approach of leadership and we all know she will be truly missed. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Cookeville, Tennessee, that on behalf of the citizens and the employees of the city of Cookeville, deepest appreciation is hereby extended to Connie Albright for the tremendous contribution she has made toward the growth and improvement of the quality of life in the city of Cookeville. Now therefore, be it further resolved that this resolution shall be duly recorded and filed in the city clerk's office, adopted this day, the 21st day of August 2014.
Mr. Mayor, move for adoption of the resolution.
Second. All in favor, vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, and then we have item eight, Resolution commending Councilwoman Alma Anderson.
I'll be happy to read it.
Mayor Walmsley, I believe, has that.
Yeah. It's right there.
Okay. I'm happy to do this as I was one of the people that got Councilwoman Anderson to run way back. Whereas Alma Anderson faithfully served as councilman of the city of Cookeville from August 2006 to August 2014, and whereas while Alma Anderson, a local educator and advocate for historical preservation, has worked tirelessly to serve her community in many capacities during her tenure as an elected official, her zest for public service has been evident by her cheerful participation on multiple boards and commissions. And whereas Mrs. Anderson shared an initial vision for Dogwood Park by seeing the project come to fruition while continuing to support future growth and citizen participation in the park. Alma truly has a servant's heart, actively encouraging educational efforts and partnerships while considering the voice and needs of citizens, all the while showing tremendous support and recognition to the employees of the city of Cookeville. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Cookeville, Tennessee, that on behalf of the
while considering the voice and needs of citizens, all the while showing tremendous support and recognition to the employees of the City of Cookeville. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Cookeville, Tennessee, that on behalf of the citizens and employees of the City of Cookeville, deepest appreciation is hereby extended to Alma Anderson for the tremendous contribution she has made toward the growth and improvement of the quality of life in the City of Cookeville. Now therefore be it further resolved that this resolution be duly recorded and filed in the city's clerk's office this 21st day of August 2014.
Thank you, Councilman Walmsley. Do I have a motion?
Move for adoption, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right.
It comes to our, end of our meeting, and the new council, any of them would like to say anything?
If you don't mind, just a quick word. If ever an incoming council has had the ball teed up by the outgoing council, this one has. The announcement of Academy last week and more good news to come, just, it puts a nice, nice bow on the package of the work that you all have done, and, and let me just say how much we are so appreciative of it for what you've done to set it up for us. And beyond that, you know, having served a little bit before, you all have shown us how to have three two-votes and disagree and not be disagreeable, and you've been a model for that, and that's so important in terms of the chemistry of the group, and that's something that we should set, use as a standard and set as our goal. As far as this new team, I was just thinking about the members I'll be able to serve with over the next four years, and if I'm correct, there's 31 years of city council experience combined with this group here. That could be a good thing or a bad thing, Jim. I'm not sure, but, but I look for, I, I believe for good. I think the vision is great, and we appreciate so much the work that this, this council has done, and looking forward to serving with this team.
I'd like to say that I am happy to be back with the people that make up the employees of the City of Cookeville. They're the face of Cookeville. They're the ones that represent us all over the place, and it's just a pleasure to be back with all the employees of the City of Cookeville, and I really appreciate what the previous council has done, particularly in making the council room look a little bit nicer than what it used to look many years ago. So I am happy to be back, and I appreciate the employees and the people of Cookeville, and I'm happy to be back. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, I'd like to say a couple of words. The role I assume tonight is an incredible responsibility, and I'm truly honored and privileged to have this opportunity, join with you on this journey, and that would not be for, except for the love and support of a lot of people. First, I wanna thank God and pray for his wisdom and dedicate, dedication and direction. I'm blessed to have had loving, devoted parents who taught me the value of hard work and sacrifice and the importance of giving back to my community. I'm blessed to have a supportive and loving wife, Shannon, and our children, who share my love for Cookeville and my passion for public service. I'm blessed to work for AstraZeneca Pharmaceuticals, which supports and values its employees serving their community. I'm blessed to serve with these four experienced, dedicated council colleagues who are as committed as I am to building a bright future for every resident of Cookeville. And in a very profound and personal sense, I'm blessed to have this chance to serve the people of this, my hometown, a city that I love, a city that has so many valuable assets and resources, a city capable of embracing change and that stands ready for a bold new future. Our recent successes are just the beginning of long collective journey. This journey will not be easy. We will not fix everything that needs to be fixed overnight, and we will have to work long and hard, and we'll have to work smart, and we'll have to focus on those changes that will make a real and lasting difference for our community. We all answer to the same boss, the people of Cookeville. They don't, they don't expect us to agree with each other all the time, but they do expect us to work together in an open and collaborative manner to get things done and to maximize results, and I'm confident we'll do just that. We know that Cookeville faces adversity and pressing challenges on our journey to greatness. The list this council will face is long, issues of planning and transportation, equity, utility rates, improving quality of life, the need for more family-supporting jobs for our citizens and more. While controlling costs and reducing overhead and working smarter, we should always ask, are we making Cookeville a better, more equitable city by this expenditure? We approach these challenges, however, from a position of great strength. Cookeville is a special place because of smart choices, difficult decisions, and hard work by many people over many, many years. So let me close today with the words of Oliver Wendell Holmes, who wrote, "I find the great thing in this world is not so much where we stand, but in what direction we are moving. To reach the port of heaven, we must sail sometimes with the wind and sometimes against it, but we must sail and not drift nor lie at anchor." He's right, the wind is up and the sails are full. There is no time to drift nor to lie in anchor. Our city's best days are ahead. Let us go there on this journey toward greatness together. Thank you, and I appreciate this opportunity, and I look forward to serving our great community. God bless. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.